Welcome to everyone. We're glad to have everyone here. This is a very exciting evening. There, let's hope there are enough chairs and if everyone can look and we may have run out of chairs actually.
They're taking care of it, it is a happening crowd.
This is exciting that we need, we have such a wonderful audience that we need more chairs. Thank you very much to the people who have quickly moved in to get some chairs for us.
Serve ice cream then you get people coming.
It's true, the refreshments have helped us too. We'll start then with a call to order and a review to approve the agenda. If everyone could check that. And if anyone has any change, otherwise if you have a motion. Yes, thank you Sheri. I'm, you're moving to accept the minutes as they stand? And is there a second? Thank you Jean.
Just the agenda.
Oh, the agenda, excuse me. Thank you. Moving on to the minute. Thank you Jean. All those in favor of accepting the agenda? And that's unanimous for everyone that's here? We'll now move to approve the minutes. Does anyone have any changes or on the minutes? There being no changes, is there a motion? Thank you Jen. And that motion is to approve those minutes the way they stand? All those that, may I first a second? Thank you Alison. All those in favor of accepting the minutes, please signify by raising your hands. If you were not here, we understand you're not voting. Okay. Did you get those votes Lisa? Thank you. At this time, are there any comments from the public? To ensure the public's right to be heard, the board has set aside time during the meeting for public comment. Two minutes are allotted to each speaker and a maximum of 15 minutes to each subject. Is there anyone who wants to speak this evening? People may speak later on other topics. Beginning first, we're going to begin first with the reports and recognition. And the first would be our CAE, CAE Student Awards. Dr. Lettsi, would you start that? Thank you.
Good evening. And it is wonderful to see so many people here tonight. Thank you all for coming out. I thought I'd begin just by sharing a little bit about the CAE Student Leadership Award with you and then introduce you to our two award winners tonight. The mission of the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, or CAE, is to assist local and regional boards of education in providing high-quality education for all Connecticut children through effective leadership. CAE is passionate about strengthening public education through high-performing transformative local school board and superintendent teams and inspiring success for each and every student in the state. The CAE Student Leadership Awards Program is designed to honor Connecticut high school students who exhibit exemplary leadership skills. One male and one female student from each high school in a CAE membership school are eligible to receive the CAE Student Leadership Award. The leadership skills this prestigious award looks to recognize and honor are students' willingness to take on challenges, capacity to make difficult decisions, a concern for others, an ability to work with others, a willingness to commit to a project, diplomacy, an ability to understand issues clearly, and the dedication to honor commitment. A committee of teachers, counselors, and administrators met together to consider the best candidates for this year's CAE Award. And it became clear that our two award winners tonight best exemplify all that CAE is looking to honor in this award. So I'll begin with Isabel. It is my great pleasure to introduce you to Isabel Taven. I had the wonderful opportunity to speak with Isabel recently, and within seconds it became abundantly clear that her enormous energy, passion, and zest for life defines all that she does in and out of the classroom. After our conversation together, I wasn't sure if I was ready to take a nap or run a marathon. But I knew that Isabel was ready for whatever would come her way. Isabel's seemingly boundless energy and positive outlook on life shine through all that she does. And she's been a standout leader of this year's senior class. She participates in a number of significant school organizations, including Student Advocates, National Charity League, New to New Canaan Club, and others. As a member of the student coalition, Isabel served as political president and vice president of her class. Additionally, she was an instrumental member of the student leadership team that began this year to study school climate here at NCHS. And she's participated in sessions with peers and staff focused on improving the educational experience for all students in our schools. In the classroom, Isabel is one of those students that every teacher wants in his class. She's inquisitive, bright, kind, and driven to always do her very best. Her rigorous schedule throughout high schools included challenging courses such as AP English, US History, Government Politics, World History, along with honors level classes in Calculus, the Sciences, and others. And along with this rigorous schedule, Isabel also pursued her interests in creative areas, taking courses in documentary filmmaking, music technology, and documentary photography. Between her coursework and extracurricular responsibilities, one would think that Isabel's plate was pretty full and that she could only find time to eat and sleep between all these activities. However, one only has to spend some time with her to realize that she's capable of much more. As a student athlete here at NCHS, Isabel shines again. She's a four-year varsity field hockey and lacrosse player and was a captain in field hockey this year and a two-year captain on the lacrosse field. Field hockey had an outstanding year this year, culminating with a stunning shutout 2-0 victory over Dariann to win the FCAC championship. It was the first time New Canaan had beaten Dariann in a decade on the field. And it was Isabel's spirit, energy, and faith in her teammates that anchored the team's efforts. Isabel scored the only two goals of the game, one in each half. And when asked about it afterwards, she shared, "I had no idea we would be here at the beginning of the season, but we believed in ourselves. Maybe other people didn't believe in us, but we played our hearts out tonight and we're so happy about the way it turned out." Midway through the game after scoring her first goal, Isabel recalled, "I felt right then that we could do this and that just took all the nerves away." As she is often, Isabel was right. And she was named the most valuable player of that incredible FCAC championship game. And as she was, her teammates and friends piled onto the field in celebration together. With such talent and skill, you might think that Isabel plans to play field hockey next year. However, I'm sure much to the dismay of the field hockey coach, she's excited to begin her career as a member of Dartmouth's Women's Lacrosse Team as she enters the class of 2019 this fall. Throughout her life, Isabel's loved lacrosse. She's a player, a coach, and a referee, and has won numerous awards for her excellence on the field. Along with being named the NCHS Ram of the Week and the Rudin Report Player of the Week, she was recently awarded the Connecticut Interscholastic Athletic Conference's Most Prestigious Award, the Scholar-Athlete Award. She'll be spending her summer coaching Pee-wee lacrosse, refereeing games, and preparing to begin her life at Dartmouth in the fall. With all of these incredible accomplishments, it's humbling to consider that Isabel's most outstanding characteristic, as described by teachers, administrators, and peers, is her compassion for others. She is a strong and vocal ally who has the confidence and courage to stand up for others in need. And you can believe that when Isabel speaks, people listen. Isabel, the Board of Education, the school community, and the community as a whole applaud your accomplishments and celebrate what you represent. The power of passion, commitment, spirit, and kindness, we should all aspire to be more like the person I've had the privilege to describe to you tonight. So please join me in congratulating Isabel winning this night's prestigious. Charlie's a scholar who loves to engage his peers and teachers in lively theoretical debates, sometimes on topic and sometimes, well, maybe slightly off-topic, but always very interesting and engaging. As someone with an insatiable curiosity who loves to learn, Charlie shared with me recently how hard it can be to study in this digital age. When studying, he explained, "His curiosity leads him to ask questions, which lead him to try to find the answers to those questions, which lead him to start searching online for more information, which leads him further and further away from his actual homework." Nonetheless, he always finishes his work, and these intellectual journeys have led him to learn even more along the way. Charlie's boundless energy and positive spirit are infectious, and his passion for life is inspiring to those around him. Along with a challenging schedule including AP Physics, Bio, European History, and English, he's also enrolled in honors multi-variant Calculus and Orchestra this year. Way to take it easy your senior year child. He's also a swimmer and one who can amazingly remain cheerful and optimistic at 5:00 in the morning for swim practice, according to his coaches and his peers. Charlie's been recognized for his impressive accomplishments in the classroom, has been named an Advanced Placement Scholar with Distinction and a National Merit Scholarship finalist. The New Canaan High School community has also recognized Charlie for his impressive accomplishments. As a leader of the student advocates, he was awarded the Student Advocates Award this year, which honors an upperclassman who has demonstrated a commitment to the mission of the student advocates by demonstrating self-respect, respect for others, respect for differences, and an active commitment to ethical, responsible behavior. Additionally, he won the H. Norman Ricker Award honoring a love of learning and a sense of humor and creative wit. And the Penny Waits Award honoring a student who has displayed a love of learning, zeal, and know-how, which transcends the school and its classrooms and extends into real life. Charlie's not only a scholar and an athlete, he's also an accomplished musician. He's been playing the violin since fifth grade, and although he's not pursuing a career in music, he intends to continue playing for fun. He even spent some time transposing the Guns N' Roses song Sweet Child of Mine, but unfortunately got a little lost in the guitar solo and decided it probably wasn't worth the effort I don't think I've ever met a student more excited to begin his career at college in the fall than Charlie. He is very excited to be going to Washington University in St. Louis, where he applied early decision and which was his first choice. He explained that the school just felt right from the start, and that it was one of only two schools he applied to this fall. Unlike the torturous experience of his classmates in the first semester, Charlie knew where he wanted to go, applied and was accepted, committed, and began getting ready. I'd call that a know-how that transcends the school walls. He's interested in pursuing a career in the sciences and is particularly interested in studying biology and chemistry. Charlie spends his summers on Long Beach Island, and this year is looking forward to working in a small deli, biking, and continuing his surfing lessons that he began recently. When I told him that we go down to the shore every year, he told me to look for him, and I will. He'll be hard to miss because as you can see, he makes a tangible impact everywhere he goes. We're very lucky to have had Charlie Lenahan as a student, musician, athlete, and community member these past years. He is truly a gentleman scholar, and it's my honor and privilege to introduce him to you tonight as the CAE Award winner. Can I ask if we can take just a brief two-minute break to take a couple of pictures with our student award winners and then we can go on with our recognition of retirees?
Yes. Mr. Dine and I think has his camera ready.
Whatever you like, this is your picture. I didn't get into the international travel.
Thanks Brian.
Oh, my pleasure.
Are you going to move now to recognize the teachers?
Yes, I would love to. Thank you. This is a fun night. Not only do we have the CAE Award winners, we are also honoring our retirees for their years of service here in the New Canaan Public Schools. So we'll begin. Christine Bonarigo. Chris, would you? Oh, I've been seeing her a little long enough. Christine Bonarigo came to us nine years ago as an educator with extensive experience from preschool through graduate school and having worked with all levels from challenged to gifted learners and everyone in between. She's a consummate teacher with a determined, positive belief in the inherent ability of all students to succeed. Chris sees and understands the totality of the needs of her students, and she has dedicated her career to attending to those needs emotionally, socially, and educationally. Chris developed our Literature of the Holocaust course for high school students. Under her leadership and thanks to her passion, this class has grown through the years from one section to four, from just under 25 students to close to 100. Chris is also responsible for starting the New Canaan High School Human Rights Club, through which student members participate in a series of conferences sponsored by the Holocaust and Human Rights Education Center. In recognition of Chris's outstanding efforts, she was presented with the Susan J. Goldberg Memorial Teacher Award in 2013. This award is given to a teacher who best educates her school and/or community about the Holocaust and other human rights violations. Chris has been dedicated to teaching and learning with her colleagues as well. A few years ago, she began the New Canaan High School Reading Team, which supports teachers in all academic areas in their instruction of reading and writing across the disciplines. She served as a mentor to teachers in the department, both formally and informally, and has always been an outstanding resource and guide for peers and colleagues. She and her husband, who's here tonight, Dom, are hoping to have more time to spend with their two sons, daughter-in-law, and daughter, both here in New Canaan and at their home in Florida. Congratulations, Chris. And on behalf of the Board of Education, the students of New Canaan, thank you for all you've done through the years.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. For those twins.
Throughout her 14 years in the New Canaan Public Schools, Rita Weisman has been a leader and mentor to colleagues and a caring and supportive teacher for all students in her care. Rita has served as the instructional leader for many years for her special ed colleagues and the South School Learning Support Team. In that role, she's been an advocate for her team and has provided strong, positive leadership. In her position as a speech and language pathologist, Rita provided valuable support to students with a wide variety of needs, and she always believed every child could succeed. Rita took the initiative to structure a very successful co-teaching model to support students in their comprehension, and her efforts have made a significant difference in many children's lives. Rita's also formed strong partnerships with the parents of her students and works together with parents to provide support at home as well as at school. Although we don't have time for a number tonight, many will also remember Rita's performance with dance partner Matt Kaskak as the Dancing With Our Stars fundraiser at South School a few years ago. Maybe after they, after me. When several of her students were asked to describe Ms. Weisman, they shared, "Ms. Weisman's a very caring, nice, and fun teacher. I don't want her to retire," said one of the students. "I want her to stay with us until I leave South School. She helps us to learn by playing games with us, and she always shows us how happy she is when we do well." Another student, "I have all good things to say about Ms. Weisman, nothing bad at all." Same here. It's evident that in all she does, Rita loves her students and cares deeply about each and every one of them. Congratulations Rita, and on behalf of the Board of Education, the students of New Canaan, thank you for all that you've done.
You didn't mention she's a good cook.
I didn't mention it.
Congratulations. This is from the school. Thank you.
They only give me so much time. No, Linda Spinnard. Thanks to the great work she's accomplished these past 14 years, Linda Spinnard will leave behind a most important legacy, the voice and conscience for the belief that all children can learn, and most importantly, that they can learn together. Her belief in the virtue of a learning community embracing all types of learners has been a guiding force that has become deeply embedded into the professional culture at SACS these past years. Linda's always been a learner and a pioneer in discovering new practices as a teacher and as an administrator. In addition to her advocacy for inclusive teaching, she led SACS's progress in seeking out more authentic descriptions of student learning. Using rubrics and frameworks to describe learning and to encourage student reflection, Linda has helped guide SACS as has begun reforming its grading system so that everyone, students, teachers, and parents alike, can better understand how students are doing and what they know and are able to do as a result of their coursework. Linda's also been the master scheduler at SACS, a complex task considering there are over 1,250 students, two entirely different bell schedules, and a host of other challenges. She must be a very good Jenga player. She instinctually knows which block to move without having the whole thing come crashing down around her. Linda's positive spirit and can-do attitude have had an impact across the district as well. For the past three years, she's been nominated Social Coordinator of the District's Administrative Team. Given that administrators don't have social lives, this has not been a particularly trying task. However, Linda's unwavering dedication to the students of New Canaan shows in all that she's done these past 14 years. And SACS is the outstanding school it is today in part thanks to her commitment and passion. Congratulations Linda, and on behalf of the Board of Education, the students of New Canaan, thank you for all that you've done.
This is from the Board of Education. Thank you for what you've done.
Dr. John Barone has taught at New Canaan High School for the past 14 years. Before joining us here in New Canaan, John worked as an executive with a corporate environmental consulting firm where he developed programs, trained staff, and monitored regulations. John, although it took you longer than most, we're thrilled, especially your students, that you eventually figured out that you're a gifted educator and that you're meant to be in the classroom. Truly, we're very fortunate you joined us here in New Canaan 14 years ago. John taught a variety of courses at NCHS, including Physics, Earth Science, Environmental Science, the Science Research Program, and Mathematics. His PhD in Physics prepared him well for the rigor of the classroom, and his love of learning and deep commitment to his students enabled him to thrive as a teacher and a mentor. Throughout his teaching career, John always sought innovative ways to engage his students. John's a master at developing intellectual risk-taking and problem-solving with his students, designing activities such as the balloon launcher in the cafeteria. I experienced this mastery firsthand as John stood above with the students and I sat below, wearing a helmet and a poncho, waiting to be pummeled by balloons. I thought, "John is the master." John was also very involved outside of the classroom with students and colleagues. He coached girls basketball and golf and has been very active with our student coalition through the years. Additionally, he chaired the Faculty Senate's Educational Policies Committee and has always been an active contributor to the building and the district. John is known for believing in all of his students and encouraging each and every one of them to succeed at the very highest level possible. He's very much looking forward to his retirement in Williamsburg, Virginia, and we're going to miss him. Congratulations, John. On behalf of the Board of Education.
John, all best wishes on your retirement.
After a successful teaching stint in Windsor, Connecticut, Jay Spooner joined New Canaan in 1995 and has remained at New Canaan High School ever since. Through his 20 years, Jay taught chemistry at all levels, including Advanced Placement, along with Earth Science. Jay expects much from his students, even before school study sessions, and they consistently deliver year after year. That's because in large part Jay doesn't expect more from his students than he's willing to give himself, as his drive from Vernon, Connecticut these past 20 years has shown. This winter, when I was considering a snow day, Jay was the first person I thought of. If I didn't make the call by 5:00 AM, I'd miss Jay, and he'd be on the road. It's a lot of pressure for a first-year superintendent. When asked about the drive from Vernon each day, Jay explained that although the drive is long, teaching in New Canaan with such wonderful students and colleagues has been worth the trip, and we're all so very lucky that it is. Jay's students respect and admire him for his thorough explanations of difficult materials and his unrelenting drive to challenge all of his students to do their very best. Every year, Jay's students emerge from his classes well-prepared for a future in the sciences, and he leaves with us a lasting legacy throughout the school community. Jay's a proud husband, father, and grandfather. When he's not spending time with his family, he's an avid outdoorsman and can often be found cycling and backpacking. Congratulations, Jay. And on behalf of the Board of Education, the students of New Canaan, thank you for all you've done.
This gift is from the Board of Education. Thank you very much for what you've done. Thank you very much for what you've done.
For the past 21 years, Sunny Colan has been known for her calming influence on all parties, parents, students, and staff, which has been particularly useful in the midst of evaluating and programming for our neediest of students. Through the years, students and parents have expressed their appreciation for Sunny's ability to communicate complicated pieces of information, often from standardized assessments laden with professional vocabulary in a simple and clear and easy-to-understand fashion. Essentially, her work has not been so very different than the work of our classroom teachers through the years, only her audience has often been different, and she has shown herself to be outstanding in her work. Sunny's ability to communicate clearly and well has helped countless families to partner with the school in order to make the best decisions possible for their children, and in many ways, that has made all the difference for some of our students who need the help the most. Sunny has been a proud advocate for professional learning across the school over the years, and she has been unwaveringly committed to helping her colleagues learn about and implement the latest findings about students and how they learn. She's worked primarily in the upper division at Saks, where she oversaw the growth and graduation of 7th and 8th grade students. Her efforts through the years have made significant contributions to every student, and she's had a meaningful impact on children's lives. Congratulations, Sunny, and on behalf of the Board of Education and the students of New Canaan, thank you for all that you've done.
This is a gift from the Board of Education. Appreciation. Thank you for everything you've done.
As an expert speech and language pathologist these past 24 years, Donna Arrow has made tremendous contributions to the New Canaan Public Schools, not only at West School but at a district level as well. As a lead learner, Donna planned and organized professional learning for the district's speech and language team for many years, and thanks to her dedication and expertise, these learning experiences were always thoughtfully designed and reflected the group's professional learning needs. As someone who loves to learn, Donna always participated as a peer, colleague, mentor, and learner. At West, Donna was always a consummate professional and could consistently be relied upon for her highly professional evaluation and reporting skills. She's also an excellent partner with families and a mentor and guide for students, and she served on the student study team and the school climate team as well. Donna's also been instrumental throughout the district as the Chair of the Professional Development Committee. She's been relentlessly dedicated to providing the district with meaningful and timely professional learning experiences, and many of us will miss her detailed emails in the years ahead. Donna is very well-organized, and she motivates her students with gentle and calm approach while instilling respect for self and one another in the classroom. She's always had an obvious rapport with all of her students, and they know her expectations, and they know that she believes in them. Her awareness of each student's needs and expertise and knowledge as a speech-language pathologist enable her to make a difference in countless children's lives through the years. On top of all that, this year she coordinated the making of grade-level quilts to represent West School's three Rs: be ready, be respectful, be responsible. She's been a great resource for staff, students, and parents, and we wish her all the best in retirement. Congratulations, Donna, and on behalf of the Board of Education, the students of New Canaan, thank you for all you've done.
This is from the Board of Education. Appreciation for all you've done. Thank you very much. Thank you.
25 years ago, Diane Cooper's illustrious career with the New Canaan Public Schools began with a note from the principal of South School for her file. Did you not? The note simply says, "Hire this woman as quickly as possible."
Nice to know.
Yeah. Fortunately for the students of New Canaan, we did. She's been serving our schools with distinction ever since. Not only is Diane a master teacher, she's also been very busy through the years finding ways to contribute to the district and to the profession. Thanks to her efforts, she has set the record at South School for being a representative on more district curriculum committees and being a cooperating teacher for more student teachers than any teacher in South School history. You don't get a plaque for that. Diane's always been a go-to person when there was need for representation on a district curriculum committee, and her can-do spirit and attitude are always valued and appreciated. She's valued for her expertise, successful collaboration, and for experience, and she's always the voice of reason when the need arises. Diane's commitment to working with student teachers comes from her belief, which we share, that training the next generation of teachers is an important professional responsibility, one that impacts not only the career of that beginning teacher but our entire profession as well. As a mentor teacher, Diane selflessly shared her knowledge, experience, and wisdom with her student teachers, and she must have done an outstanding job, since many of her student teachers have since become full-time teachers in our district and some are even learning to become cooperating teachers themselves. Diane has never wavered in her commitment to her students or the profession. She is a professional in every sense of the word. Diane leaves behind quite a legacy at South School, having impacted the lives of many students and colleagues. South School will miss her calm demeanor, quiet dignity, and great sense of humor, and we thank her for her immeasurable contributions to our school and our district. Congratulations, Diane. On behalf of the Board of Education...
Diane, on behalf of the Board of Education, this is a gift to say thank you. Thank you from the board.
Julianne Janowski has served for 25 years as a valuable member of the New Canaan High School Math Department. During this time, she successfully taught almost all levels and courses offered by our department. For the last several years, she's also taught in the afternoon instructional program, where she's helped some of our struggling students to succeed. She has served as advisor to the math team, which this year had the strongest performance in competition since the team began. In her out-of-school hours, Julianne enjoys doting on her precious grandbaby, and if you saw her pictures, you would dote on her, too. During instruction, Julianne presents course content in a way that helps students develop strong, executive-functioning skills focused on organization, note-taking, and self-monitoring. She endeavors to include applications to real-life situations and to help students make interdisciplinary connections between their learning and mathematics and what they know and are able to do from other disciplines, thereby helping them to truly learn the content and to find authenticity in the classroom experiences. Julianne spends many hours working with our math team to prepare for and to participate in mathematics competitions. She organizes and runs the math department's awards breakfast as well, where students are recognized for their outstanding accomplishments from the year. As a teacher and a mentor, Julianne is committed to helping students grow in their skills and is also always aware of their needs personally and socially as both adolescents and teenagers. Although it's hard to believe, Julianne also finds time to be the organist and choir director at St. Paul's Evangelical Lutheran Church in Bridgeport, and she once owned a retail gift shop, everything personalized, in Westport. Her creativity, commitment, and care will be missed at New Canaan High School next year. Congratulations, Julianne, and on behalf of the Board of Education and the students of New Canaan, thank you for all you've done. And now, last but certainly not least, Elaine Scott has been a proud member of the New Canaan Public Schools since 1977, 38 years ago, and began teaching 43 years ago. Told you I'd get it in. Elaine began at Center School, and in 1983, she moved to Saks Middle School. Something must have gone very right there at Saks, because once she was there, she never left, and she's been teaching English and Social Studies to 6th-grade students ever since. Elaine's been described as a superstar, whose every word and deed in the schools communicates how she genuinely and deeply cares about each and every student. Every child she contacts each day comes away from the exchange feeling valued, important, and capable of achieving great things. Over the years, Elaine has always practiced what she preached by modeling a lifelong and enthusiastic commitment to learning. Elaine's students will remember her for her unconditional care and service, especially at those sometimes very difficult years of early middle school. Elaine has always helped to create and sustain positive classroom and school climate and culture through her generous outreach of spirit and service to her students, parents, and staff. Elaine received many comments from students and staff, such as, "Ms. Scott was my life." "Mrs. Scott is the best teacher ever. She's really nice and really cares about her students. Anyone who has her is really lucky." Or, not quite as eloquent, but similar meaning, "Mrs. Scott rocks my socks." We get the point.
Thank you.
In 2005, in a New Canaan advertiser article, Elaine was shown instructing her students at Hogwarts on the Hop on the Hogwarts Express program, which is part of the New Canaan Public Schools Summer Enrichment Initiative. She was quoted as saying, well, the article said, "Professor Elaine Scott, who was taught at the camp for three years, said she loves coming back because she loves books. I think she loves coming back because, as she's shown us through the years, she loves children. And working to help the children of New Canaan learn and grow these past 38 years has left a powerful legacy." Elaine's gifts as an educator, mentor, colleague, guide, and friend have made a difference in hundreds of children's and peers' lives, and all they can say is, "38 years were not enough." Congratulations, Elaine, and on behalf of the Board of Education and the students and parents of New Canaan, thank you for all you've done.
This is from the Board of Education. Thank you for all you've done.
So as you can see, this year's retirees each leave his or her own powerful legacy as they leave our schools to explore this next stage of their lives. In total, this year's retirees have given the New Canaan Public Schools 230 years of service, and we'll always honor and cherish all they have done through the years on behalf of the children and families of New Canaan. Thank you all.
Thank you very much, Dr. Lutze. This was very heartfelt and nice for us to all learn the wonderful things that people have done. I don't know if you want to do another photo or not.
Do I take a two? Just a two-minute break.
All right, I think that would be good. We were just thinking that this is really a wonderful occasion, and to have the teachers who have been honored tonight to be in a photo, we would appreciate that. And Mr. Dyna, if you could help us set that up, that would be terrific. It'll be a large photo.
Do you want me to take a photo of them from this way?
If they would like to come up, we can take a two-minute break, and then if you would like to come up and line up in front of here, is that a good way? It was two rows or three rows in front of the pictures here?
Sure.
Thank you, Dr. Lutze, for helping us to understand all the things that these wonderful teachers have done and to appreciate the way they've touched so many students and helped so many people in their careers. We'll move now to the Model UN, and would you like to introduce the people who are speaking?
Sure, I'd be honored to, and they're welcome to move over to the podium as I do Earlier in the year, the Model UN came to the board and asked about some trips that they were going on and shared some information, and we were, the board was very happy to support them in their work and the great things they were doing, and said, "Please come back to us and tell us how it goes." So Mr. Phillips is here, along with Ms. Hornberg and some students from the high school, and Allison Freeman is here, along with Devlin from the middle school, to share with us a little update on the program this year, how things have gone, and talk a little bit probably about future plans.
Thanks, Dr. Lutze. I'm going to keep my section of this pretty brief. We've got all four of our captains from the 2014-2015 season here. They're an amazing bunch of students and great leaders, and just quickly, JP McMahon, Charlie Sosnick, Kyle Persky, and Ann Bolzer. We also have Jane Wickstead and Quentin Greas, who run our Saks feeder program, so we've got a lot of great young leaders here, and we're going to So, we've got a lot of great young leaders here, and we're going to give them a chance to talk. So, I'll keep mine very, very brief. You've seen this before, I think. This is the way we position ourselves within the school community as an academic sport for a number of reasons, but Model UN is a competitive activity. It's a non-contact competitive activity, and, pretty much. So, these are the things that as a club we believe in, and we really strive to sort of achieve this. And we've held this position for a number of years now. Firstly, we have a club that promotes a worldview, certainly a non-American-centric view. We like to focus on developing skills in research, critical thinking, persuasion, and collaboration. And the leaders I have behind me are a classic example, certainly, of their skills in persuasion and collaboration, as you'll see in a minute. We like to go to the top conferences against the toughest competition, because we believe, like a sport, the better the quality of your competition, the better you become as well. We like to give back to the school, local, and international community, and certainly the relationship with Saks, relationship with another school in Fairfield County has helped us do that. And finally, as you'll see, these young students are in an extraordinary position for future leadership. You'll get a chance to see that. Quickly, as far as last year is concerned, and I'm going to let them talk about it more, we had ninety-three active members in the club. Thanks a lot to the power of the Saks program. We've had a great influx of very well-prepared freshmen coming into the club. The sophomore simulation, which J.P. McMahon will talk about, has now become, and it's in its eighth year as an student experience in the Social Studies Department. Our program, our college program this year, every year we change slightly. We added Georgetown, which is the national competition for Model UN, and we dropped Harvard. We stuck with Yale, Brown, William &amp; Mary, Dartmouth, and Cornell. We took sixteen students to The Hague. Four of them were juniors, twelve of them were seniors. That's the largest delegation we've taken, and it was an extraordinary group. And then, as far as awards are concerned, sixty-six awards were earned by our team, all grade levels, from freshmen through to seniors. And at every grade level, delegates won Best Delegate Awards as well. And finally, we're very proud that our delegation, William &amp; Mary, won the Outstanding Delegation Award. So, with that, I'm going to introduce Ann Bolzer to talk about the college program. Then Charlie Sosnick will talk about what happened at Thymon. J.P. McMahon will talk about the sophomore simulation. And finally, Kyle Persky will talk about the scrimmage that we have with another school in the district.
Hi there. So, oftentimes, I know it's a little confusing to think about what we actually do for a whole weekend away from school. My parents have often questioned me when I get home. "Why were you gone for four days, and what did you learn?" So, you'll see above, there are some pictures from our various conferences. But the basic composition is twenty-four students and one to two advisors, and we'll go and we'll debate international issues with some of the most competitive teams up and down the East Coast, occasionally from the West Coast, and occasionally from international countries. And we'll all be representing certain nations or certain people to voice their given opinions on world issues. So, it's a very compelling weekend. We spend upwards of twenty-four, in some cases, and forty-eight, in others, hours of debate over a couple of days. So, we'll be on for either three days or four days, learning about these international issues from our peers and actually writing legislation to solve the issues. So, very valuable learning experience. You get to interact with members of all grade levels, and there are different delegations picked for each conference. So, for example, a starter conference would be at Dartmouth in the spring. We try to take twelve freshmen or twelve underclassmen. As it's a nicer conference, six hundred kids. But upwards in January, we have over three thousand delegates represented at the nine-month conference held in DC. And we bring some of our best debaters and public speakers and policy thinkers to that conference. So, it's a very valuable learning experience. From what I said, you probably won't be able to tell, it's a lot of fun, too. But it's our main function, and it's a lot of social interaction combined with some really great learning experiences on international issues. Thanks.
So, I was one of the sixteen kids who went to The Hague this year. I believe it was our third year, going, traveling to the Netherlands for Thymon. And I can honestly say it was one of the most valuable experiences I've had as a student in New Canaan. There's a lot to be said for the experience of being, of having Americans as the minority. There are only two American schools there and probably a hundred, a hundred other schools. And that sort of perspective of realizing, it's hard when you go to school in the U.S. and you live here to realize that there are other places in the world, and they think differently, and they think differently about us. And the experience of hearing that firsthand cannot be understated. My favorite experience that happened there is one of my close friends that I met there lives in Tehran. And so, to hear him tell me that I was the first Jew he'd ever met in his life, that he and all of his friends hate Israel, that they don't like the U.S., that's an experience that's shocking and confronting, sorry about that, but is important to have, I think. And I think that it's, going to The Hague is the most profound experience I've ever had in realizing the differences there are in the world and our ability to bridge them. So, any Model UN student has the opportunity to go to The Hague. I would deeply encourage them to do it. Not even so much for the Model UN aspect of it. That's, it's fun to do it in such a large room with people from all over the world, but the opportunity to meet people from every corner of the globe and understand their perspectives and hear what they have to say is just an unbelievably rich experience. So, that's The Hague in a nutshell.
Okay, so, the sophomore simulation. This year, well, first off, the sophomore simulation every year is entirely student-organized. Students pitch ideas for topics and committees. Students organize briefing packets, and students really do everything from that to logistics, and there's a little help from the advisors as well. And this year, we had about a hundred and fifty sophomores debate in this year's sophomore simulation over five committees, two of our GAs, Dissec and SOCUM, and two crisis committees, ranging from a committee mimicking the Berlin Conference, a committee mimicking the Committee of Public Safety during the French Revolution, and another committee mimicking the UN Security Council. It was incredibly rewarding to watch this this year. As an overseer of the SOCUM committee, I got to just kind of sit back and not really do much, just kind of watch what was going on, and it was incredibly rewarding for me, because I am a product of the sophomore simulation. It was actually my first experience of Model UN. And I went into the day, not really knowing what to expect, but just putting my best foot forward and exceeded my wildest expectations, really kind of found the new passion that I had for international politics and global understanding. And a lot of the things that Charlie just spoke about, and a lot of those aspects, I found just kind of a deep root for that, that I definitely wouldn't have found if the sophomore simulation hadn't come into my life. And to see that, to see that happen to this year's sophomores was incredibly rewarding. It happens every year, and Mr. Phillips can, speaks about this all the time, but just sometimes, something clicks, and you just, you find out you have something, you have a passion for something, you're good at something, you can speak well, you can collaborate well, you can write well, you're a good policy thinker. And without this forum, that really doesn't happen. So, it's incredibly rewarding experience, and it makes sense in the curriculum with the sophomores. They just finished studying World War II, especially in the Global History course, and the United Nations has just been formed, and it's really just a good opportunity for them to understand that international politics plays an incredibly vital role in the world today. And it's incredibly important to think about your perspective, but also the perspective of other countries, the perspectives of other people, and how that plays a role into our daily lives. And this year was incredibly successful because of that experience and being able to see certain individuals, just, it clicks, and just getting all the Facebook requests to join the Model UN Club a couple hours later was incredibly rewarding, and I'm excited this year. The sophomore simulation was a great success, so, thank you.
So, to demonstrate how much of a success it was, and as a way to have a data-driven reason to pat ourselves on the back, we polled our sophomores at the end of the SOFSIM and got some excellent results. If you can kind of crane your necks, everything is blue, and blue is strongly agree, and everything in red is agree. So, one hundred percent of our students said that the sophomore simulation helped them to learn how to speak in public. I'd say that's a resounding success. The next one is, "I knew more about my assigned global and historical issue at the end of the day than I did at the beginning." Ninety-seven percent of our students agreed or strongly agreed with that. "The SOFSIM helped me to consider alternative viewpoints on the same issue." Ninety-four percent, and ninety-four percent again for the sophomore simulation, allowing me to collaborate with peers in a productive way. So, the sophomore simulation was obviously a success, but it also demonstrates how valuable Model UN is as a group. And just to give you a little more perspective, I'll just, I have a couple quotes from sophomores. "I learned how to communicate with other groups regarding ideas and ways to work together. I believe it was a fun way to learn how to collaborate with others." "Today was a good learning experience because I got to share my viewpoints, which people don't normally see, which people that I normally don't see or talk to, gave me insight on different ways of thinking. I also learned how to speak in public and have the confidence to share my opinions." And finally, "I was able to see the perspective of many different countries and how little actions can be catastrophic. Overall, it gave me a more worldly view of things." So, our club is all about building confidence, teaching kids how to speak in public, how to be worldly, how to communicate, and how to collaborate.
So, as my peers have said, and as Mr. Phillips and Ms. Hornberg have said, Model UN really is a sport. It's fiercely competitive, placing rigorous demands on even the most timid of freshmen, requiring them to stand before or receive unfamiliar faces and speak on some of the most perplexing and paradoxical issues facing the global community today. Now, it's about cooperation and communication with people with diverse ideas and backgrounds. It's about the spirit of diplomacy in the face of adversity. And it's a positive outlet for our students to have some good old-fashioned academic fun. So, where does this all start? It starts with our scrimmages. Now, our scrimmages, and the ones that we co-host with schools like New Fairfield High School, have really grow the Model UN network within the community. We establish strong ties with local competition, and we help encourage growth of a number of high school Model UN clubs, as we've done with New Canaan High School. It helps develop the skills of our new members and identify areas of improvement before we tackle bigger competition. And it also tests the skills of our experienced members, requiring them to direct the flow of debate in a room of people who may or may not have experienced Model UN before and demonstrate their knowledge of parliamentary procedure. So, it's these scrimmages that have really helped us thrive throughout the year in our competitions, and it's these that kind of plant the seed, as J.P. said, to allow some of the newer members to gain exposure to the Model UN world and hopefully find that positive outlet that they can take into their next years in high school. Thank you.
All right, so Quentin and I have been running the, we've been coaching the middle school team this year, and so, it's only been going on for two years, and I have to say, these kids are absolutely fantastic. They're only, like, they're fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and they've, they're able to maintain a conversation about foreign international relations, and it's just, I'm blown away by how talented they are in this, in Model UN. And so, we have been teaching them speaking skills and how to write position papers and stuff like that, but they really, they just need the guiding hand from us. And so, we had two scrimmages this year. The first one was in the fall, and it was, we had some of the high schoolers come over and help them out a little bit, just to show them the ropes, and they really didn't need it. They were fantastic on their own. And I can have Quentin talk a little bit more about the scrimmage we just had last week. But I'd just like to say that they were really amazing. We have a couple of them with us now, and I have to say, they did a really good job, so I'm very proud of them.
Yeah, so the spring scrimmage was mostly to expose them to a different kind of committee. They've only been exposed to general assembly committees, which is the big rooms. So, we thought, maybe they should be exposed to the crisis rooms, which is a lot smaller. So, we decided that we'd take a committee that we had been in before, which was the Central Communist Committee in Yugoslavia in nineteen forty-eight, and we gave that to them. We kind of expected them to have a little problem, because it's something new, and they always have problems. But they were extremely successful, and with, after about fifteen minutes in committee, they were rocking and rolling, and they were writing directives, passing resolutions, and it was fantastic. We were very surprised by their success. And I think that it's great to see them this successful, and I hope that they continue with their success in the high school.
Okay, so, next up is plans for next year. Our plans basically are the same as they were for this year. We're doing the same six college conferences, Brown, William &amp; Mary, Yale, Georgetown, Dartmouth, and Cornell. We're planning to do four scrimmages again, also working with New Fairfield High School for two of them. We also are planning to, hoping to go to Thymon at The Hague, the International Conference. The reason, one reason we have so many conferences is because we have an enormous club. It's really a very large proportion of the high school community that is in some way involved in the club. And we want to give each and every member of the club at least one opportunity or more to go on a conference, a weekend conference. We're also hoping to continue the sophomore simulation once again. And what we need from you, the board, is just your support. We need your permission to go on these trips, and we need your support, and we're hoping that you will give it to us. Do you want to talk about?
And we're not asking for your money. We're, we have, we have a booster organization. One of, obviously, Model UN is an expensive activity. And one thing that we've been really thrilled is that we've got very active parents of members who have run a booster's organization for us. We have two major fundraisers a year, and that's allowed us to keep, keep the costs for families down to a sort of a manageable level. We've got some families where they've got three kids doing Model UN at the same time, and so, it's important that we keep those costs as low as we possibly can. We have two fundraisers each year, and that's helped us a great deal, and we, hopefully, we'll be able to continue that again this year. We've got a new leader of our boosters club, and we're looking forward to what she can do to help us achieve our goals.
I'm not used to this. What do I need to hit? Oh, down, that would be good. If Deb, you want to join me and bring up our three students? We're very lucky that our seventh graders, right, or sixth graders, sixth graders I'll have next year have joined us today. You want to introduce yourselves real quickly?
I'm Alexa Corillo, and I'm in sixth grade.
And you went to the International Conference?
Yeah, and I went to the International Model UN Conference in New York.
I'm Olivia Locata, and I'm also in sixth grade, and I went to the New York City Conference.
I'm Madison Grendauer, and I'm in sixth grade, and I did not go to the New York scrimmage.
But you did participate in our spring one, right? So, the Model UN Middle School Conference was held at the end of March twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth. And we were very fortunate. We took twenty students and three days. We had Thursday night, Friday all day, all day Saturday. So, it's a very long day for our fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. And we took representatives from every single grade, which was wonderful. And the pictures that are up here are actually our kids at the Model, at the UN inside the General Assembly hallway where they had their opening ceremonies. So, it was very, very exciting for them to be in that room. You can see we're actually in the same room, same areas where the delegates from all the different countries are, and it was extremely exciting, wouldn't you say, ladies?
Yeah.
Just checking. The International Conference, we represented Iraq, which is not the easiest country for, again, our young students to really get a hold on. It was one of three of our choices. I kind of went to challenge them a little bit. But two of our delegations, they were double delegations, so four of our students were honored with honorable mention awards for the first time ever at an international conference. Those were both seventh-grade teams that we had. There were sixteen hundred and twenty-three students there, thirteen American states, eleven countries, and four out of five major continents represented. So, just as Charlie mentioned about Thymon, which I was lucky enough to go to on that one, too, we really got, our kids got exposed to students from all over the world, and it was just a wonderful, wonderful experience to see these students from all over, from speaking so many different languages and being there. Deb, do you have a, you want to do a quick final? Deb Line, our fifth and sixth.
Hi there. Thank you so much for all your support. We really appreciate it. The kids are really fabulous. Really so proud of them. And if you wouldn't mind, just for two seconds, I'd like them to just tell you a little bit about what they've been doing and how they're enjoying it. So, anybody? Madison? And what's great about Madison is she was not an original, she was not an original member, but she was so excited by what she'd seen and heard that she kind of joined us after New York, and it's like, if I'd only known, I would have gone to New York, too. So, we'll have Madison.
So, we kind of have learned a lot. Um, so, we kind of have learned a lot in Model UN because I did not know what a position paper was, or like, all these different things, and then, in, I don't know, month or two, um, we, I learned so much, and it's just a really good experience.
So, when we went to New York, it was really cool because we got to meet a lot of different people from a lot of different countries. I'm not sure how many, but it was, um, it was cool going to the UN and just meeting people and having fun. So, I think it's a great experience, and everyone should try to do it sometime.
Okay. So, I think we'll just hand it over to questions. It'd be great if you could ask questions of the, of the leaders, uh, within the club. I think they're probably gonna have more interesting answers than us, so, so please feel free to ask any questions that you have.
I'll just start by saying, I'm very impressed with all you've done, and I think you're probably gonna hear similar comments, but let's ask, anybody have questions about what they've been doing or the activities? I think this would indicate that you've done such a fantastic job of supplying information that we really understood what you've done and how hard you've worked on it, and what you're learning from it, and what wonderful people you have advising you. It sounds like a terrific program. I hope I'm speaking. Allison, you have one to add?
I guess I just have one quick question. Do any of you plan on pursuing Model UN at the college level? Or have you looked into it in the schools that you're attending next year?
Uh, yeah. Well, first off, I'm headed to Colgate University in the fall, and I know they have a Model UN program and a debate society, and, uh, an incredibly, um, competitive debate society and debate team, and their Model UN team seems to take second, second precedence to the debate society. But, uh, I'd be able to assure you that I will do all I can to ensure that the Model UN club at Colgate, uh, gets as much praise as the debate society, and that we, uh, get up to the level, if not exceed it, uh, my four years there. So, yes, I do plan on pursuing it in college.
Any other questions?
Another thing that we've definitely noticed is that a number of students are looking for that life beyond Model UN. Um, so, I, for one, am planning on studying International Studies. I'm going to Johns Hopkins University next year, and have done, have both reached out to a number of people, um, using a number of contacts. I have to talk with people in the FBI and the CIA to see if that's a possible career path I can per- uh, pursue, but just looking for different outlets, um, to kind of use the background of diplomacy and public speaking to kind of further a career or an interest or a passion of ours.
Um, there is a conference annually at Cornell that will be headed next year, but I think it's more than that. I think it's about learning about the different issues. I think to become a global citizen and an actual student and a scholar, you need to know about these global issues. So, it's a lifelong introduction, um, to global issues. I, too, am planning on doing international relations in college, but I think it's more of, um, a chance to get involved with international relations and then continue that regardless of your major. Uh, it's a very, uh, great bundle of transferable skills you can use in any major that you have, um, so definitely planning to continue.
Any other questions?
So, I'm heading out to Occidental College, um, next semester, and it's actually one of the main reasons I chose to go there is because of their strong international program, because I do Model UN. And another one of the main reasons is because they are the only school in the country that, um, you can do an internship at the UN as an undergrad, so that's one of the main reasons that I chose that school. So, Model UN's kind of basically steered me in that direction, so, yeah.
Yeah, well, I'm still a junior, so, um, I'm not going to college next year, but I know that every school I've looked at, I've asked if they have a Model UN program, and it has definitely been very influential for the schools that I have looked at and schools that I am planning on applying to. And I think that it's very good to hear that it has made a good impact on me, because I know it's very beneficial for public speaking and international affairs to understand what's going on around the world, and that's great.
Thank you.
I just wanted to, uh, thank each of you for being such great ambassadors, uh, for the New Canaan Schools, and for taking kind of this opportunity so seriously and doing so well. Uh, you're really paving the way for future students by your own success. I remember a few years ago, uh, sitting on this board and saying, "Well, what about the middle school?" And now, we have this fabulous middle school program, and it's so heartening, and it's really, uh, due to the enthusiasm of, uh, your predecessors and your enthusiasm and your advisors. So, uh, you make us all very proud. Thank you.
We look forward to having you hopefully come back again. Oh, here's a question.
I just want, well, I just wanna add, too. Thank you so much. I'm so impressed by your public speaking and, and your knowledge and your drive, and it's really exciting, and I have someone in the middle school now that cannot wait to come to the high school and start this program that you guys have all started the foundation, so thank you, really. And you've got quite a bright future in front of you, all of you.
Yes.
I, I just have to echo that. Um, two years ago, when I, when the Model UN captains presented, I remember thinking, like, "I want my kids to do that." I mean, you guys are all such impressive public speakers, and I now have an eighth grader who has done the middle school program with Mrs. Freeman for the past two years and has had a tremendous learning experience. You know, over the holidays, he was sequestered with his cousin, who is a junior at Johns Hopkins, talking about drone strikes and ISIS and chemical warfare, and, um, you know, this program really elevates the thinking, the higher-order thinking process, and I just think it's fantastic to have you guys come here. We, we celebrate, you know, athletics so much in this town, and to see your accomplishment and the skills that you've gained through this program and how that's gonna carry you forward into your college careers is just remarkable, so congratulations to all of you.
Anyone else? Scott?
I would just point to, you know, having been insularly involved, the leadership from, excuse me, Mr. Phillips and the others have been, I know Allison and Deb, and everybody's been so committed to it and so helpful to the parents as they go through it, and the recruiting and the growth of the program is something that you guys should be really proud of. Thanks.
I think that indicates your, oh.
No, I just, I just wanna quickly mention the, you mentioned about approval for next years for the calendar, so for the board, I'll have, um, I'll get the dates and I'll send it out to you at the end of the week, and we'll have it on the agenda for the, the next meeting in June, the twenty-second. But if there are any questions that, um, you think you may have about that, we've got the whole crew here now as well.
I think there's an indication here that you've done a very thorough job. You've explained it clearly and, and concisely, and we have, we've learned a great deal in the process, and I, I would just be echoing what everyone else has said. What a wonderful experience for all of you, and we're so glad that you're taking advantage of it and really going to use it in your future. It's terrific. Thank you very much, the sponsors, and, and we hope you'll come back in the future.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thanks.
Moving to our next, next item on the agenda, which would be the school climate initiative update. Dr. Lissy, do you wanna start that?
Well, I'll actually turn it over to Ms. Bianca.
I'm not on.
Good evening, everyone. I'm very, uh, happy to reintroduce to you Nora Daly, our district school social worker, and also the student prevention and intervention facilitator. I memorized that term, uh, several years ago. Um, and in, speaking of fabulous middle school programs, and in keeping with the theme of this evening, which appears to be considering alternative views and collaboration and global awareness, uh, Nora will be actually presenting to you with some of the, uh, wonderful Saks administration staff and, um, students who've been working very hard this year at Saks in terms of the issue of their school climate, and we wanted you to see their work and, and spend some time with them this evening. So, Nora?
And just as Nora begins, just to share again, earlier in the, in the year, I think maybe in October, there was an overview of the plans and a presentation, and the board had shared a, or extended invitation for the group to come back and talk to, talk to the board about how it's going and what we've been working on. So, this is that initiative that was at the high school and at Saks, um, and we thought, with the Model UN, the high school representation tonight, a for part A, that we'd have some Saks representation here for, for the school climate work, so, Ms. Daly.
Okay. Well, thank you, uh, for having us here, and I will say that my role tonight will be extremely brief because I have some wonderful, um, folks that I'd like you to hear from. So, um, what I would like you to know is that there have been two teams working, um, having a lot of fun learning about school climate together this year at Saks. There, there's been an adult design team made up of administrators, school counselors, and eighth-grade teachers, and there has been a student leadership team. We like to think of them as our expert of, uh, expert panel of students on the, their perspective of school climate. And we have some representatives from that group who are gonna describe to you the fun learning we've done this year.
All right. Good evening. Uh, I'm here to give a little bit of background of the creation of SWAG, and it's the, um, it's the student leadership team, and our goal is to improve school climate. And for you that don't know, school climate is the way that a student or staff member feels when they walk through the Saks doors or the high school or anywhere. And it's, um, and when we first started, our main objective was to give the students a voice and make them feel as their point of view matters. And, um, and so, in the process of choosing members that could, um, like, follow up that goal, we had our advisory classes elect students that they thought were, um, could be good choices, and then, outside of that, from that, our school counselors, they selected the electees, and, um, we kept, we got a very large and diverse group of students that were ready to take on that goal of improving school climate. Uh, after we first met Dr. Preble from University of New England, uh, we had to come up with a name for the group and raise awareness, uh, thanks to Jack, who you'll hear from in a minute. Uh, he thought it'd be a good idea to make a rap, so I wrote one, like, because I couldn't sleep, so I decided to write a rap, and, uh, in the chorus, it consisted of the word "SWAG," and people thought, maybe we can use something like that, but then Garrett, as you just heard from, he came up with "Saks Will Achieve Greatness," and it just, and it stuck. Um, so, when we started, we had to train to get to know what school climate was and become experts at the topic. So, we were actually here in the Wagner Room, and we trained with Dr. Preble and his team from New England College, and we participated in a couple activities to get to know each other and kind of just break the ice, created a charter of how our group would work and just how we would function together, and, uh, we learned about how change happens, which is, uh, coming up next. So, uh, the change process is a long event. It takes a very long time, and it consists many, consists of many events that, uh, have to go in order. So, this year, we mainly focused on just bringing general awareness to the school and interest in the students. Um, so, once we were all trained and experts on school climate, we raised awareness and interested the students in SWAG, into SWAG, and we encouraged them to take a survey so we can get data, uh, of how they felt about the school, and these were in the advisory classes, and here's how we advertised SWAG.
I'm afraid of failure. I'm afraid of suffocation.
I'm afraid of spiders.
I'm afraid of being buried alive.
I'm afraid of mountain lions.
I'm afraid of elevators.
School friends.
Student teacher relationship.
Where students will achieve greatness, also known as?
SWAG! Us to make Saks a better place!
I'm afraid of geometry.
I'm afraid of play.
So, as you could see, we tried to make it fun to interest the students, and, uh, then... So, before the advisories, there was Take the Lead that we mainly practiced in seventh grade, and the difference between advisory and Take the Lead was that Take the Lead was led by teachers, and advisories are led by fellow students. We learned from that, from the experience, we learned that students listen better to other students, and they also participate more. Um, in the advisories, we also focused on school climate projects, and like Jack said, we showed videos and we introduced new ideas that the members of SWAG and the teachers had to come up with to help our school, and the advisories went really well with the students.
So, in December, um, students, teachers, and parents were invited to take a school climate survey. SWAG members then learned from Dr. Preble and his team how to analyze the responses people gave. We chose to decide to work with either the numbers part of the data or the words. Those analyzing the numbers looked for important data by noting either very high or low numbers that stood out or discrepancies, meaning any area where groups of parents, students, and teachers disagreed heavily. Those analyzing the words looked for common themes and for quotes they felt were important to share with the rest of SWAG. Both groups made posters to share what they thought was significant to show the whole group. Um, that's one up there, which says, "Teachers are very kind and respectful to students. They also make you feel very safe and always happy." This is one of the quotes, and sample two is from Numbers. "Teachers take time to ask me about my talents, interests, et cetera. Only thirty-five percent of students agree, whereas eighty-six percent of faculty agree." All SWAG members got to vote on what they felt, um, was, were the most important areas to focus on. Uh, we went around the library putting stickers on each poster, and as you could see, there were a lot of stickers on that poster, and the amount of stickers, um, and it was more significant. Um, the data that received the most votes via the dots were the areas that we focused on for developing our three goals. We shared both the processes and our goals with all the teachers at a faculty meeting after school and all the students in our advisories.
In the survey, some of the things that were brought up by many people and some of the things that the members of SWAG thought were very important to touch upon, um, were made into goals for us to improve. Goal one is to provide students with more opportunities and choices. Goal two, improve respectful relationships between teachers and students and among peers. And goal three is improve the effectiveness of school discipline and explore alternative approaches.
I'm Kier Russo, and I'm here to talk about the action planning and our, um, first goal that we focused on this year. So, for action planning, once we created our three goals based on the survey data that we analyzed, we decided to plan and conduct projects for each of the goals in order to accomplish them. Since we had a limited time span to work towards said goals, we decided SWAG would focus on shorter, more attainable projects. Every SWAG member was given the option to choose which goal they wanted to work towards based on interest and passion. Once we had those subgroups, we began thinking about specific projects that we would be able to achieve within the four months and projects that would expand reach to future generations and leadership teams at Saks. I was part of goal number one, um, which was providing students with more opportunities and choices, and our group decided to tackle project of an interest survey. We conducted, um, this project with all the seventh and eighth graders. This project was used to broaden peer and adult knowledge of students as individuals. And here is a diagram of the interest survey that we gave out, and there's four quadrants. I'm smart in, I enjoy, I hope to get better at, and I'm afraid of, and we had the students fill those out. And as, as of now, the goal number one team is still analyzing interest survey results from both, um, the seventh and eighth graders, but so far, we have gathered and organized a lot of information, um, on our interest survey, and it has proven to be a great success.
All right. So, goal two is to improve respectful relationships between teachers and students and among peers. Um, for this goal, we created a project, which was Mixed Up Lunch. The purpose of this was to get everyone out of their common cliques in the cafeteria, meeting people they thought they could never be friends with and finding interests. So, once we came up with this idea, we checked it out within our advisories among our peers. We then found out what they were feeling and their opinions on the idea before we went ahead with it. went ahead with it. We adjusted our plan to ensure that they were happy, thus leading to a revised, small-scale version of the Mixed Up Lunch. In the small-scale version, it would take place in a classroom. It would be up to 20 kids, which is much smaller than a cafeteria with like 100 kids. We supply them with food, games, and we'd also have a slide in the background, which focused on leadership and school climate and encouraging a friendly environment. So this took place not in the sixth grade, but in the eighth, seventh, and fifth grades. And it's part of recruitment for future leadership teams. And what that means is that it's giving students a taste of SWAG, and this would possibly influence them to join in the future and hold on that legacy that we've created and that we're going to leave behind in the middle school, but hopefully keep going in the high school.
So I was part of the goal number three, which was to improve the effectiveness of the discipline system in the school. And what we wanted to do was have a long-term project of a student-led jury, but it would take way too long. So we decided to not focus on the bad things in school, but focus on the good. So we made an appreciation box, which is exactly what it sounds like. Just a box where people appreciate. And we display all of the things that students say about each other on a tree right next to it. And it just focuses on the positives. So to advertise it, we all had to make another video. My personal favorite one. So as you can see, it was more on-the-way-back and fun side to gain the interest of the students.
So as I said earlier, SWAG, it got started at the beginning of the year. And immediately, we saw some great success. But we did really evolve as a group. And in the beginning, like I said, it was a very diverse group, and so not everyone was friends with each other. And it took a little bit of time before everyone could get real comfortable. But through Dr. Preble and his training and our great staff team, we really were able to connect with each other. And we all, it was great because we all had common goals for the group, which was really easy because it helped with communication and goal building. And throughout the couple of months we've been doing this, it really has become like one big family, and our goal is to pass it on to the next generation.
Thank you for your support.
Does anyone have any questions that they'd like to ask? Allison, did I see if you had to go on?
Sure.
First of all, I just want to say, as a Board of Education member and a member of this community, as a parent, I can't underscore enough the importance of what you guys are doing on a daily basis over at the middle school. You're in the unique position to really touch the lives of your peers and really impact them positively, and therefore impact their future, which is a relatively unusual opportunity to have for somebody your age. And I know you guys might be a bit young to kind of appreciate what the Board of Education does, but we're all volunteers up here. You know, we all give hours and hours and hours of our time over the course of years, quite frankly. And we do this to create opportunities in the schools. And you are our reward. Because to come on a night like tonight and to hear the Model UN students speak from both the high school and the middle school, and to hear you speak tonight, and to see how driven you are and how positive you are, this is why we do what we do. So thank you very much for coming tonight, and just to remind us sometimes of why we do what we do and why we give up what we give up. Because I can think of no better reward than to sit and listen to you guys tonight. So thank you.
Scott?
Yeah, I was going to say that when you get a group of interesting, intelligent, young people together and they focus on something, whatever it is, the outcome can really be astounding. And that's the case here. What's interesting to me, though, is how you guys were so thoughtful and data-driven. You know, in the real world, that's what drives thought process today. And for you guys to get involved and to start by looking and researching and gaining data, and then letting the data take you where you went, I think is such a valuable thing for you as you go forward, that you guys will remember this for the rest of your lives. You did an outstanding job.
The process was important, very important. Yes, Sheri.
So I agree with everything they said. You guys did an amazing job. You should all be very proud of yourselves. And I love the name SWAG. I love the empowering process that you guys have gone through. I do have a question, though. So I just want to make sure I'm clear on, are the goals that you're setting, they're set for SACS grades five through eight? And has there been any thought or discussion about breaking down goals by grade? So for example, your lunchroom project, which I completely agree with, is especially important in sixth grade, because that's the first time the students have open seating, and that is, you know, the social abyss. So I'm just wondering if you've given any thought to further defining goals by grade? Because really, the growth and the difference between a fifth grader and an eighth grader is significant.
So I'll say to you that one of the things that we learned this year was about piloting. So you make some plans, and you sort of test it out a little bit, you pilot things. So this year, much of the work has been piloted with eighth grade. Toward the end of the year, we've begun to work more with the seventh grade and the fifth grade to kind of pull them into the process. I think we can say that we have a fair amount of interest, and so as we move into next year, that group of students from those two grades will participate in this same kind of a process.
Right. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I had seen the appreciation box, and I had wondered how it was working. And I think too often, people don't say "thank you" or "appreciate." And I think that sounds like a great idea. Just wanted to commend you all for having that positive attitude. And I hope lots of people put things in it. I could see the leaves up on the wall, and I was looking at them and was very interested in it. So thank you explaining, so I can understand.
And we really liked the video, too.
Yes. Excellent video.
Can I just, sorry, can I just say that I can't underscore the importance of this work more than anyone here has? And I know how hard all of you have worked this year to create this, and the legacy that it will bring to SACS is so exciting to me. Having dealt with the schools for quite some time now, and worked with students from SACS and the SACS administration, as well as the high school and our elementary schools, to really create as much as possible the work that you're doing in terms of how we treat one another and the importance of that work. So thank you for the time that you've all spent away from other things, and the depth of the work that you've done. And thank you to Nora, and to Brad, and to Julie, and to everyone who's sitting there, and to Mr. Macedo for allowing us to organize this work, and for you, you're bringing it forward.
With great appreciation. Thank you for coming and telling us about it. We'll move now to our next agenda item, which is one to look forward to with our donations. And again, Dr. Lettsi, would you like to start us on that?
Sure. The first action item is to accept a donation to our special education department. This donation came to us very generously and unexpectedly.
It did. I will just say that we're so fortunate in the appreciation that our parents show in the work that our staff has done with their children. And very spontaneously, after a planning and placement team meeting two weeks ago, some parents who wish to remain anonymous approached our coordinator and said that they wanted to give this gift as appreciation for the hard work of the staff who had worked with their child over the course of his school career. And that they wanted it to be applied as we saw fit over time in appreciation for our work, so.
That is a wonderful gift, and greatly appreciated, I know.
Tremendously.
But real credit to everything that has happened with so many children that have come through the schools and the special education department. So thank you, and the staff that works on this.
Can I just add sort of a...
Yes, we need a motion. Yes.
First of all, I think it's wonderful. I think it's a great testament to the job that we do and the community in which we live. But this money goes into a fund earmarked for the special education department to be applied...
For the benefit of students.
Over time, as we see fit.
Right. As the need arises, as we look at different opportunities, different things that come.
But it is segregated in a fund earmarked exclusively for that.
Specifically for that purpose. Right. It's not in the general fund. It doesn't go to defray costs of things we've already budgeted for and we're already doing.
Right. And not only in that, I'm just, there's a fungibility to it all. So if it goes into a big fund, and which $15,000, I guess it doesn't really matter as long as it gets spent in the end. But it's nice to know that they're segregated and not coming.
Yes.
We actually created a gift account with sub-accounts for each location, because throughout the year, and last year, it became obvious that we have such generous parents. So we created that as part of the gifts that the Board of Education is entitled to accept. It is a constant account. It doesn't disappear at the end of June. So that, for instance, this type of a gift wouldn't even begin to be looked at until over the summertime to see its effectiveness.
And the accounts that are related to special education directly are named so that I know what they are, and I monitor the spending for each of the gifts or grants.
Fabulous. Thanks.
Is there a motion to accept this gift? Scott, thank you. And a second. Thank you. Thank you, Penny. Any more discussion about this? Okay, be no other discussion. All those in favor, oh, sorry.
Just quickly, I just want to just acknowledge Darlene. I mean, I think, you know, I've seen over the years that we've had several donations made by parents. And on occasion, we've been privy to some just beautiful notes that are written from parents that literally just, you know, drive you to tears. And we don't often, we were lucky enough tonight to be able to acknowledge the retiring teachers. But we don't often have opportunity to acknowledge individuals who are involved in our school system. And it becomes clear when you read these notes or you hear from parents that we have so many just incredibly exceptional people that just do their job on a day-to-day basis and don't get officially recognized. And so I just want to take a moment to recognize those people without naming them, because I don't even know their names. But I just know the fact that parents are so moved to make these donations to the school system, to the special education department in general. We all know, because we hear what goes on in other school systems, we know how complicated, how complex it is to run a special education department. We hear about the challenges that other school systems have. And we are lucky enough to have, you know, Darlene Pianca running our system. And we are obviously such a well-run system that we have parents actually writing checks for our system versus what some of the other systems are going through. So I just want to take a moment to acknowledge and thank Darlene for all her hard work.
Thank you so much. We have wonderful people that work with us and for us, and we're very lucky to have all of them. And that's why we have the donation. Thank you.
Thank you. We have now a motion, and we were just getting ready to vote on the motion, and that was a very, very appropriate thing for us to think about as we're doing this. All those in favor of accepting the gift? And that's unanimous of everyone that's here. And thank you very much to the donors, who will remain anonymous, but I hope will be able to hear how thankful and grateful we are. Number two, donation to East Elementary School.
Yes, and Chris Wallach is here if we have some questions. But we are also asking the board tonight to accept a donation in the amount of $7,840 for East School. It's from the PTC to support updates to the furniture in the science rooms. And you have in front of you a letter-headed letter from Chris that shares a little bit more information about this. The funding, Chris writes, "The funding will allow for the purchases of new tables that are more appropriate in size for young children, new stools that are flexible with seating or wart positions, shelving for supplies, and carts that allow materials to be transported to classrooms for lessons." Again, the generous support of our PTC and our PFA, and families here of the East School community helps us to continuously improve our delivery instruction in our classrooms.
Can I have a motion about accepting this? Or, yes, Sheri? And a second? Thank you. Jean? Any discussion before we vote?
Well, I'd just say that I think that the support from the parent community is amazing. And this isn't the first time that the PTC has stepped up at East this year. There have been tremendous improvements to the playgrounds through the generosity and interest of the parents. It's incredibly appreciated, makes us all want to work harder, and we very much appreciate the leadership at East School. And, you know, we've just seen, I mean, boy, all of our Board of Ed meetings should be like this. But maybe we shouldn't be mixing, you know, but it is, you know, it is wonderful to hear about the terrific things that are going on in the school. And thank you for what you're doing at East.
We certainly know that many hours went into earning this money and various fundraisers that the parents put together, and we're very appreciative of that, and how important it is for STEM, which is something that's been a goal with the system for a long time. And I'm not sure what condition the chairs were in, but I'm sure they had to be replaced or else that wouldn't have been a focus that ours have been devoted to. And we thank you from the school for doing that. We now have a motion on, and it's seconded. All those that, oh, any other discussion? Allison?
I just want to say quickly, this is the second meeting in a row, you know, ditto to everything Penny just said, second meeting in a row that we're approving incredibly generous donations from our parent community. And I walked away from the last meeting thinking, we probably, as a board, approved more money in one night than most school systems will approve in a year, or maybe two, or maybe five. So again, just taking a minute to appreciate how incredibly lucky we are as a community to have the parent support that we have, and then how rewarding it is to see what happens with that support. So I just think it's wonderful, and I just want to congratulate everybody who's making these donations, thanking them making these donations, and then congratulating everybody for everything that they're doing with this money and the rewards and the success we're having with it.
We should remember this at budget time.
I think so. For everybody to appreciate.
Allison brings up a very good point. It's an amazingly generous amount of money that gets handed to the schools in addition to the money raised through taxation. And I think it's something that we should point to at the appropriate time.
The parents were hand in glove with wanting to make sure that things can be purchased that are necessary and appreciated, very appreciated. We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Accepting. And all in favor. Now, we have board policy and the use of the school facilities, the second read, which has been worked on extensively. Mr. Goodman, do you want to add anything to the discussion or setting that discussion up?
Well, just very briefly, the changes have been minor after our first read last meeting. To summarize them, we were superintendent, where it did not say designate, it now states designate, or superintendent or designate. We changed the New Canaan Community Foundation from being, if you will, a filtering type of organization to be, which I think the intent was in fact not to have them filtered, but to have them to be a category-two user, as many other nonprofits in New Canaan are. And the other change, which is in usable charges, that we more clearly stated that the rates will be part of the regs, and that when the rates are established, they will come before the board for consideration, as opposed to a read. And the intent there is that if the board as a whole feels they are inappropriate, they could obviously state that and send them back to you for further review. that and send them back to you for further review. And also subsequent revisions likewise will be treated the same way, not as a first read, second read, but they will come before the board to become effective for the board's consideration. Any questions from the board, or suggestions, revisions, concerns? As Hazel so often says, "Then seeing none." I do have though, one question, and I will direct this towards Nancy Harris. In the drafting of this, I have used 501(c), where in some cases, and in other cases, 501(c)(3), and it's beyond my skill level to know what the difference is really, and I, should we, should we make them all 501(c)(3)'s?
Yes, it's part of the IRS code, so 501(c)(3) is the appropriate reference.
Okay, I don't think that we need to amend it literally, because it's five, I will just, in conjunction with the administration, make sure that they all say 501(c)(3).
(inaudible)
501(c)(3).
501(c)(3).
We'll make sure it's correct.
Right.
Okay. Terrific, that's, that's helpful to know. Did you have any other things, or?
Well, we are actively working on the actual rates to come up, to fill in the final piece, and hopefully we'll accomplish that in the next two weeks.
Okay, terrific.
Our goal would be to have that before the board, at our next meeting.
Yes.
For their consideration under the policy.
Terrific. This was a, this use of school facilities was first moved and seconded by Ms. West and Ms. Pell, respectively, on May sixteenth, two thousand and fifteen. If there are no other questions, can we do a vote? I don't see any other questions, so all those in favor of passing this, signify by raising your hand, and that's another unanimous vote. And a thank you also to Jean, who's worked very hard on this, and appreciation from all of us, the work you put in.
Been assisted, again, by a number of administrators and Board of Ed call members.
That's, the Resources Committee has worked on that, and that's Ms. Padula and Deanna Carlson and myself, so we appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Two thousand and fifteen, sixteen budget moved to approve the adjustments. Would you like to present that?
Sure.
Or is that Nancy, Nancy would be presenting, I'm assuming?
I can say a word or two, and then Nancy can certainly jump in. The, in front, the bottom of the packet, I think, in front, you have the proposed changes to adoption. As I've told people often who ask, "Is it nice now that budget is completed and things have slowed down a bit?" I explain, "Things don't ever slow down, they just change." So now, as we are looking to complete our fiscal year fifteen, our fourteen fifteen budget, we're also looking to finalize our fifteen sixteen budget going forward. As you know, there were some reductions to our request, and to the amount of three hundred and forty thousand dollars, so as we've discussed a bit earlier, at some, some earlier meetings, we're looking to make up that three hundred and forty thousand dollars in a variety of ways. Of course, always minimizing the impact of the reductions on the educational program for our students. The rationale remains consistent around the custodial overtime, the legal matters, repairs to vehicles, with new vehicles coming into the fleet, we anticipating being able to reduce that a little bit, postage, recruiting, supplies, and both instructional and office. There is a savings and efficiency that we are looking to, to get at the high school with through retirement. There is a retirement in the library, one of our secretarial staff in the library, and so we are reducing the secretarial staff at the high school by one point oh, and reassigning some responsibilities in the front office and in guidance. The library will still have its one point oh, that's not being reduced from the library, but there's some shifting of staff and some reassignments of responsibilities in order to capture that efficiency, which certainly is, is available and appropriate, the right way to go. That coupled with the turnover from our retirement, as we, as we see on the list here, can get us to the three hundred and forty thousand dollars. And then with, with the board's approval tonight, we can go ahead and begin the, you know, finalizing our budget for FY sixteen, which we'd like to put together and publish the next couple of weeks.
Anything to add to that, or?
If there are any specific questions, although I can tell you that we just received notice from Carl Chevrolet that our five vehicles, we purchased one out of our FY fifteen budget, and four are graciously funded by the town. I've received all of the transfer documents, and the invoices have been in communication with Jen Charneski to make sure that we're able to present a check from the town. We will also have a check from the Board of Education by the end of this week, so that we can take possession of all five vehicles. It takes somewhere around ten weeks in order to have these vehicles then approved for student transportation by the DMV, so the timing of this is just perfect for us. And just last week, we had another repair on one of our more elderly vehicles of over two thousand dollars, so I can assure you that those repairs to vehicles savings are real.
That's terrific. Any other questions or comments anymore, what's to add? Yes.
You know, I've, I said it before, just for the record, I just wanted to be clear, these are the, in addition to the recommend, to the reductions in our insurance reserves that the board, the town bodies asked us to make, which we're significant, and I know we're still working out some of the details of those with the town bodies. But I'm certainly in favor of these, and I appreciate all the hard work that's been done.
Are there any other questions about that budget that you want to ask? Any news from the, from the excess funds?
No.
That's discouraging.
As I'm working on the May statement of accounts, I will work up another analysis and submit it to Dawn. Last month, I did not include the salaries of the special ed staff to already indicate that we were certainly well over budget. I will go through each individual staff member as well, in terms of budgeted and anticipated, and then we'll forward it on with copies, of course, to Dr. Lutze and the First Selectman for action.
Thank you for all the time you've spent on this and trying to get this to go through in the way that it used to go through with a clearer path and less harassment or problem.
Well, for next, for next year, we've budgeted gross.
Yes.
And with great good luck, and it does require luck, that gross will in fact meet the needs of our special needs students. However, regardless of budgeting net or gross, the law is still the law, and the excess cost still, if there is related to how much is budgeted and how much is expended on these special needs students.
Thank you for that update. Look, are there any other questions now about this particular, yes?
I'm sorry, I just want to ask, and I don't want to put you on the spot, but we're within three weeks of the end of the school year, and I know you've been talking about this for months, and I know you've spent hours and hours and hours on trying to get this settled. Is there a possibility that we're going to reach the end of the school year and not have these funds? Is this something that is, exists as a possibility, or, I guess, what do we need, I think, I'd probably speak for most of us at this point, it's kind of like, all right, what do we need to do to get this done?
Yes.
Because we know that Nancy, Nancy, you're only with us for a few more weeks, and we'd certainly like you spending your time on other things that are probably more productive for the school system rather than on something like this.
Well, my anticipation would be that I'll complete that analysis, and that I will turn it over to Dr. Lutze to have a meeting with the four of us, the CFO, the First Selectman, the Superintendent, and myself, so that we could resolve this in a positive fashion before June thirty.
Thank you.
Yes.
Are there any consequences to the school district if we're, don't resolve this? Where we're showing that we're finishing the year with a several hundred thousand dollar deficit because the funds have not been transferred over, do we, are there?
Actually
Consequences or oversight from the state, or what, what?
We won't be formally closing the books for FY fifteen for at least three to four weeks into July. Last year, we closed the books in August. There can be transfers from the town to the Board of Education up until we have formally closed the books. At that point in time, I have to believe that the town will do what the legislation says, because the next step would be to sue the town.
Which would be such a lot of money, that would be pointless, it seems to me.
It would not benefit anyone.
Well, I think this is something that we perhaps need to take up with the Resource Committee again and work on, yes, Scott?
Yeah, so, in a real-world cash flow, how do we run out of money? I mean, if we don't have the mu, we have bills, we have to pay our bills, but where does the money come from? If we're going to run a deficit, we're going to have to take the money from somewhere unless we're going to leave the end of the year with accounts payable.
Well, we actually will have four payrolls, July fifteenth, July thirtieth, August fifteenth, and August thirtieth, where we're paying out those ten-month employees who have the option to elect to receive those payments. So, so the last opportunity for cash flow will be the August thirtieth payroll, so...
Does the August thirtieth payroll exceed the amount of money we're asking the town for, before?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so then we have time.
Not a lot.
Well, so what we'll do, as Nancy puts her information together, I'll schedule a time to meet with First Selectman Malazi and Dawn, and the four of us will sit together, and I'll be glad to report to the board as soon as that occurs, so we know where we stand, and what our timelines look like. We'll try to nail it down.
Sounds good.
Good.
It's a plan. All right, we have before us then this list that has been a hard list to develop, but a great, but a good job.
Did we vote on the budget?
No, no, that's where we are. So we have to do, we have a motion on the floor, and we've been discussing, and all those that are in favor of this motion, which we move to approve the adjustments to the two fifteen sixteen budget as presented. Do we get a motion?
We need a motion.
I think we need a motion, I'm looking, you're right, thank you. Motion, thank you Scott, and a second? Thank you, Sheri. Now we've got the move, we've discussed, I think, unless there's somebody who wants to discuss more. In that case, let's go ahead and vote, all those in favor, accepting that? Thank you. Now, the meeting dates. Board of Education meeting dates, you have the calendar here to look at, and, did you, did you want to talk about anything in particular about the dates or anything to make us aware? I think we had some comments in the Friday notes that...
Yeah, I'll just speak for a moment, if that's all right. The, you have the calendar for, for school year two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen in front of you. The two thousand and sixteen entire calendar year dates are not due until January of twenty sixteen. However, it's good practice for us to set our dates for Board of Education meetings for the next school year as we go into the summer here. If you'd look, the dates prior to January eleventh were established already. We've had quite a bit of conversation about the meetings, if you recall, in December and in November and around budget time. If you begin looking in January twenty sixteen, you'll see the ones that are, the dates that are highlighted are the proposed Board of Ed meeting dates. So it's January eleventh and, sorry, twenty fifth?
Twenty fifth?
Which is not, not the first and third, but that has to do with the Martin Luther King holiday, and the fact that the fourth is the first day back from our long vacation. Going to February, it's also the second and fourth, due to the February vacation, and then from March on, we resume the first and third Mondays through to the last meeting of the year, which would be the second meeting in June.
Any questions about this, before we get a motion? Any questions?
Some of us assuming July, it's
Jen?
Because this is just the school year, so that's why July's not there.
Right, but typically in July, depending on where the fourth lands, we would try to go with the first and third.
What are the November, it's just not real clear, where the November dates are?
Maybe somebody didn't have so many dates in nineteen sixty?
It's not, it was a three?
There was a three in a row. If you recall, we had, at a Board of Education meeting, we talked a bit about the, the problems with a, a board meeting the third week in December, due to the December break. So the decision was made to put, have, instead of having three meetings in December, when we get into the budget period, that we'd be better off having the three meetings in November, was the decision by the board.
Don't know why I asked.
So you know when to tune in.
Okay, then, are we ready for a motion then? Move to, to approve the Board of Education meeting dates, and then we'll have a, any more discussion after that, but we first need a motion to approve the Board of Education meeting dates for two thousand and sixteen as presented? Yes, Jen, thank you, and a second. Sheri, thank you. Now, is there any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand, thank you, unanimous. Now we move on to the Superintendent's Contract, which is something that I think that we need a motion, and then we'll have some discussion on. There has been discussion with, talking about it, yes, thank you. Allison?
I'll move to authorize the Board Chair to enter into a contract extension with the Superintendent of Schools for the next three years.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you Penny. And we'll have now discussion on that, and maybe I'll sort of start that off and just say that I think that we've had a unique situation this year of having a Superintendent come in, and despite the fact that he's a new Superintendent, we feel as if you've been here for many years. You've handled many things that have been challenges in a very professional way, and have built a wonderful relationship within the district and appreciated by the town. So are there other discussion topics that anyone would like to say? Yes, Jen, thank you.
I'd just like to say, we are very incredibly fortunate that we have you leading our schools. It's been impressive seeing you take on this role, and it hasn't always been easy. Before you said, "Things don't always," how did you say it? "Things never slow down, they just change." And you seem to be taking that in such great stride, with such a can-do, positive attitude all the time, that's so much appreciated, and I also just love your passion for your job and for our schools and our kids, so, thank you. Excited.
Yes, Penny?
I just want to say, I mostly had the opportunity to work with Dr. Lutze on, with my Saks Building Committee hat, and he's been an invaluable resource to that committee. We've taken up a lot of his time, because we've been meeting weekly. The project is moving along well. We have a key meeting tomorrow night, and I think that we've developed a great proposal, the Board of Ed endorsed it, and that is in large part due to the enthusiasm and insight and practicality that Dr. Lutze has brought to the process, as well as Greg Macedo and other contributors to the project. So thank you very much for all of that. I don't think you were anticipating that when we started.
It wasn't.
We weren't anticipating that, quite, quite so big a project.
Jean?
I'd like to say that I've been through a number of new superintendents coming on board, as others have as well, and this one has been very successful. The board is happy, speaking for myself certainly. I think the community, I know the community is happy with this transition, and we thank you for this.
Scott?
You know, I think unquestionably, the most important job that this board has is to secure the best Superintendent that we can, to, to lead the district, and, you know, it's a little premature in that you haven't, we're just authorizing you to go into negotiations, so it may not be the strongest point of view to be spending so much time singing Brian's praises, but I, but I have great faith that if locked in a room long enough, the two of you will come out with a, some kind of an agreement. Brian, I think just over the last two years, you've shown us that you have the commitment and the capability to lead this district while it helps lead the nation in educating our kids, and we'd be, we'd be thrilled if you guys can work on an extension. And we'd be thrilled if you guys can work on an extension.
Yes, Sheri?
I agree with everything that's been said, but in addition, I was just reflecting upon the decision that was made just a year ago, and I think a decision that at the time seemed like a bet. I mean, we knew you had a great track record, we knew that you'd been doing an extraordinary job at New Canaan High School, but at the same time relatively young in experience. And I think now, a year later, seeing everything you've accomplished in your first year, I'm 100% certain that you are the best leader for New Canaan Public Schools and to take us into the future. I'm especially impressed with how you've reached out to all of your stakeholders over the past year. Gary Cass said something at a recent meeting that really stuck with me about how you start your day, every day, in the schools, spending time with the students, with the teachers. We know you spend a lot of time with your fellow administrators, you spend a lot of time with the board, and also with the community. You've, I think, more than our past superintendents, really reached out to a variety of community stakeholder groups and gotten to know them, and I think has had a really positive impact upon our community relations as a result. So, I just want to thank you for your leadership and for all that you're doing, and keep on going.
Thank you.
We've got a lot more to do.
Yes, we do.
Okay. Anyone else that wants to add to that? I think I have one more statement to say, that the highest compliment that an educator can ever give is that you really care very much about the students. And that's, to me, number one, and I've seen that every day with the things and the choices and the hard work you put in. So thank you. So at this time, I think we're ready to vote. All those that are in favor, please signify in favor of this motion to authorize the Board Chair to enter into a contract extension with the Superintendent of Schools for the next three years. Please syndicate by raising your hand. I guess I can vote.
Absolutely.
All right. Was that unanimous? Yes, unanimous. Thank you, everyone.
And thank you for your kind and thoughtful words. It is my honor and privilege to be here. I'm doing this great work with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Consent agenda. We need a motion to accept the resignation, or the consent agenda, and you have the list in front of you, and is there someone who would make that motion, please?
Move to accept the consent agenda.
Thank you. And a second? Thank you, Sheri. All those in favor of the consent agenda? And is that unanimous? Yes, all hands are up. Okay. Now, next is the announcements and future meetings. Dr. Lutzi?
Sure, we have a couple of announcements. It's a very busy time of year, as you know. Quite a bit is happening between tonight and our next Board of Education meeting. So the high school graduation date is June 18 at 5:00 at Dunning Stadium, with a rain date of the 19th, which we won't need to use, which would also be at 5:00 in Dunning. Our SACS promotion for our eighth graders and the promotion ceremony for them is June 19, the Friday, at 9:00 a.m. here at the high school, in the gymnasium. Our last day of school for students is that Friday, June 19, which is a half-day for students. And our last day for staff is Monday, the 22nd, which is a professional learning day for our staff. Our next meeting on Monday, the 22nd, we are planning to have on our agenda our athletics report that we've discussed a bit, our, an updated enrollment report to take a look at where our numbers are trending and how we're doing as we go into the summer, our statement of accounts, which we always do, we typically do the second meeting of the month, and we'll have a technology update from Dr. Miller and perhaps some other folks on his team, talking a bit about district technology, but also going specifically into the X-to-one initiative that you've heard about, and we've been researching for a bit as we launch into the summer and prepare for next year. So there's some exciting things happening.
And I didn't know if you wanted to mention the educational specifications.
I'd be glad to, yes. Also, we'll be looking at the educational specifications for the SACS project. As you know, part of the state planning and reporting is for us, the Board of Education, to approve the educational specifications that are developed around SACS and the SACS programming in the building, and then submit those to the state as part of the packet that goes as we apply for the reimbursement and approval for the grant from the state. So those ed specs, as soon as I have them, I'll send them around to the board, so you have an opportunity to review them and ask any questions, and then they'll come before us on the 22nd, and we'll look for approval on that night, because the date of the, for the materials to be in the state are the, is the end of June. So we'd want to go through and have those approved, as long as there are no questions or concerns when you get a chance to take a look at them prior to the meeting. And we'll also have the dates for Model UN, and I'll have those from Mr. Phillips and the crew, and we'll have those for approval as well.
Okay. Any other question, any questions about that? Yes, Scott?
You know, I was just going to make a comment that this was an extraordinary and uplifting meeting, and it's just so great to see the product of the system, you know, in front of us, acting and doing so well. It's really, it makes it, you know, makes it almost. Yeah, it makes it worthwhile, you know?
Almost.
As Allison said, that's sort of, that's the payback. I mean, for a volunteer job, you know?
It absolutely makes it all worthwhile.
It was really.
This is why we do what we do.
Absolutely.
It was really fun.
Yeah.
Yep, did our.
Congratulations to you all. I'm glad you had some, had some icing on the cake, I will put it tonight, which is terrific.
And I just, I forgot to mention, I just want to mention with SACS, that tomorrow evening, there is a meeting with the Board of Finance to discuss the SACS proposal of the next week, I think it's Wednesday of next week, if I'm correct. The SACS Building Committee will be going to the Town Council to continue that discussion. So, we're at a very important part, point in our, in our work with the SACS Building Committee and the project, and we've got some excellent momentum going, and people are asking good questions about the project. So we're happy for the opportunity to be able to get up and talk a little bit and answer some of those questions and keep things moving.
Okay. Motion to adjourn? Thank you, from Allison. And a second, Jen? All those in favor? And that's unanimous with the group? Thank you very much.
Thank you.